All right. Let me make sure, I hope that everyone can hear us. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Virginia State NAACP Education Committee, I'd like to welcome you all to our webinar and thank you all for coming. My name is Amy Tillerson Brown, and I am the Chair of the Education Committee for the Virginia State Conference. I would like to first pass the mic, the virtual mic, so to speak, to my colleague Simone Walker for her introduction, and she will be moderating our discussion tonight. And then we'll move to our illustrious panelists, who have taken out of their busy days to speak with us about such an important topic. Simone?
Thank you, Dr. Tillerson Brown. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. We are so happy to have you. My name is Simone Walker. I am a member of the Virginia State Conference Education Committee, and also the current co-chair of the Arlington Branch Education Committee. I'm a parent with children in Arlington Public Schools and one in private school, and also a champion for special education advocacy throughout the Commonwealth. And I am just honored to host this, moderate this event tonight. You know, a couple of months ago, back on September the 4th, our lieutenant governor appeared on Sunday night in America. And she quoted, she was quoted as saying, "Parents should have the ability to choose the best school for their child, and as such, school choice is the Brown versus Board of Education of our time." And so we thought that we should take an opportunity to have a webinar to really educate everyone about what Brown really means about school choice, and put that quote into some context. So we have here tonight two plaintiffs from the Brown versus Board of Education case, and two civil rights attorneys to start this discussion off. So I will have Dr. Cheryl Brown Henderson start with introducing herself. Dr. Henderson?
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to be part of this important discussion. My name is, you heard it, Cheryl Brown Henderson. Brown, the Brown decision, his name was my late father. So I look forward to really getting into the weeds, as I say. I'm president and CEO of the Brown Foundation for Educational Equity Excellence and Research.
Thank you. Our other plaintiff is calling in, so we will circle back to have him introduce himself. But Dr. Blackmore, would you please introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, my name is Dr. Cameron Blackmore. And actually, I'm not a civil rights attorney. That was the most funny comment I've heard. I recently finished up my PhD in political science from the University of Alabama, where I did my dissertation research, and I used the second Brown versus Board of Education ruling that placed school districts under judicial supervision as my backdrop. And I looked at that from the angle of Alabama school districts. So I'm really excited to be taking place in this discussion tonight.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that correction. Now, to the civil rights attorney, Mr. Hernandez.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's so good to be with you. My name's Phil Hernandez. I currently serve as a senior vice president for Policy and Advocacy at the Commonwealth Institute here in Virginia. It's an organization that fights for social, economic, racial justice in Virginia across a lot of different issue areas, but education is a major focus for us. And so I'm thrilled to be joining all of you to talk about this issue.
Thank you. Is Dr. Stokes on the line? Do we know?
Mr. Stokes?
Mr. Stokes?
On the line. I'm going to allow him to talk. Mr. Stokes, I hope you can hear me. All right, Mr. Stokes? Are you on mute?
You're on mute, yes.
Ask to unmute, ask to unmute. It's muted, I can't. Not sure why it's muted, but...
Are you able to unmute, Mr. Stokes? Okay, while we figure that out, why don't you go ahead and introduce him? Amy?
Sure, well, Mr. Stokes was one of the leaders of the Moton strike in 1951, where he and a group of students in a protest of inadequate facilities walked out of the then Moton High School that was severely underfunded, and the facilities were not up to par with their white counterparts by any stretch of the imagination. And that stroke of activism led to the Davis case, which was one of the consolidated cases used to argue Brown one and Brown two. He went on to be a lifelong educator, and I believe he teaches me something new every time I talk to him, even still. So we're happy to have him also on the phone, and hope that we're able to unmute him very soon.
Thank you for that. So we're going to begin with having our panelists take about a few minutes to talk about what Brown means to them. And we will begin, of course, with Dr. Cheryl Brown Henderson.
Well, yeah, I think that's a it's a difficult question in that it's, you know, something I've lived with all my life. And so to impart meaning, you know, apart from a lifelong experience, is not an easy thing to do. I will say, though, that it is unnerving to hear how people are attempting to interpret the Brown decision and its genesis and its purpose for their own agendas. I listened to the oral arguments on October 31st in the Supreme Court with the University of North Carolina case, and I was really struck by both sides used Brown to underscore their argument and to make those points. And so I think that either it's an act of desperation or they genuinely believe, as they read the text of Brown, that it speaks to what they are attempting to do with respect to affirmative action, with respect to school choice, and all the battles that we are seeing now. And we all know, we don't want to get too far into this, because I know we'll be discussing all of this later, but we all know that it's disingenuine, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit.
Okay, doctor, thank you for that. Dr. Blackmore?
Sure. So to me, I just to kind of give my own personal background, because it was pretty much why I chose to do the work that I did. I started kindergarten in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, in the early 1990s. And that was at the point where the court system told the East Baton Rouge Parish School District to go back to the drawing board that your plan to desegregate this school district is not good enough. And so black parents were given freedom of choice to send their children to schools all across the city. And my parents decided to send me to a predominantly white school. And from that opportunity, and people hated that I said this in my dissertation in defense, but it's just honest to God true, from that opportunity, I was able to be fed into a magnet school where I received like a top-notch education. And I believe that overall, Brown represents a missed opportunity for this country to really focus on providing equal educational opportunity to all students. Right now, we're not seeing that at all. You know, it looks, our school systems look like pre-Brown versus Board of Education. So I would, I would like to see us go back to the drawing board and see how we can make sure that every student in these school districts are receiving adequate education.
Mr. Hernandez?
Well, for me, I think in many ways, this case, this decision sort of shows our highest aspirations, but is still very much a work in progress. I'm thankful for this panel partly because it gave me an opportunity to reread Brown, a case that I have read many, many, many times over the years. And, you know, it is, of course, a seminal landmark decision. But I think what is also interesting about it from a legal perspective is that it's also relatively short. You know, you don't always see Supreme Court decisions that are just a few pages. I'm talking about Brown one. And it is not particularly legally dense. You know, it talks about the wrongs that were done under the Plessy regime, of course, but it is actually sort of reads as a sociological document. The court seems genuinely curious about the impact of segregation on children in a way that is honestly somewhat unusual for the Supreme Court to do. Maybe you see that at district court level, not usually the high court. But I think that's what makes it so powerful, because it's so clear, it is concise, and it makes us ask a sort of basic question of a sort of what messages are we sending to our kids in terms of how they're viewing themselves and their potential? The court seems very concerned about that, which is what leads it to overturn Plessy. So in many ways, it's a high watermark, something we're still striving to achieve, but it is always a pleasure and inspiration to read.
Thank you for that. Were we able to get Dr. Stokes back on the line?
He's going to give one more try. It sounds like some of the panelists are having, not panelists, but attendees are having difficulty hearing. Could we all turn our volume up just a tad bit?
So I'm wearing a headset, and I don't know if that's making it, hopefully that's... If they can't hear me, let me know, Amy, and I'll remove it and see if that makes a difference. So I'd like to set the stage to talk a little bit about the facts of Brown versus the Topeka School District. Dr. Henderson, and your sister, I would have been your older sister at the time, Linda Brown Thompson, right, was a student at a black school in Topeka, Kansas. And that school was Monroe Elementary. And my understanding of the facts, and please correct me if I am mistaken.
No. You cannot imagine that we've lived almost 70 years in the middle of disinformation, I'll put it that way. We have discovered how it started. Brown Topeka came on the heels of 11 school integration cases in Kansas, and Brown was the 12th case. There had been three cases in Topeka before Brown. So we were the first against the Board of Education. There was two elementary cases and one junior high school cases. So when, in 1948, when the NAACP in Topeka, that they were going to attempt to, I think John on, to persuade the local school board to desegregate their elementary schools, because Kansas permitted segregated schools only at the elementary level and only cities of a certain size. So Topeka met that criteria. So McKinley Burnett, the president of the NAACP, made a strategic decision that he would pursue simply persuading the school board to exercise their option. They always had the option of doing that. But he did not succeed after a two-year campaign, which included petitions and attending meetings, and he decided then to pursue legal action. The difference was that the Brown v. Board case, as you know it, started in federal court. The earlier that I mentioned to you, they were all argued in state Supreme Court. And the majority of the cases were successful because they came from communities that did not meet the population threshold that was required by the 1879 law that governed Kansas schools. So the NAACP recruited families. They did in all those cases to be plaintiffs in the case they were putting together. And one of the legal redress committee was a personal friend of my father. And so he came to our home and we used that friendship, that longstanding relationship, to ask my father if he would be willing to be one of the plaintiffs in the Topeka case, because the parents were the plaintiffs on behalf of their children. And so Dad was the 10th person. There were nine moms that had signed on by the time they came to our home. So my father, after some convincing, he was somewhat reluctant, after a couple of weeks, decided that he would join the campaign. So long story short, in the fall of 1950, they had 13 families that had, that agreed to be plaintiffs in the Topeka case. They all, they represented 20 children among, between them. They had 20 children. Alphabetically, my father was not first. Brown, his fellow litigant was alphabetically first. But he was the only dad, and he was always bothered by that because he ended up being the only, only man among the litigants of the 13. So it was pretty, what's the word? It was almost a coincidence, you know, it was almost fate, if you will, that he was the lead plaintiff and his name heading the roster. We still have not determined, other than gender, how that happened, because it's something that he pursued on his own, and it was not something that he sought out. And he was somewhat reluctant to participate, but did so because of his friend. At the end of this filing in February 1951, my father did testify, along with one of the other dads and moms. And then the only child to testify was Catherine Carper, who, she was 10 years old. So we suspect the older of the elementary age, because she did testify. So a lot of expert testimony. So when he talked about the social science evidence, Louisa Holt, who was with the Minniger Foundation in Topeka and at the University of Kansas, was the first person to broach the idea that perhaps there would be psychological harm done because this had the weight of law, you know, segregating on that. Because I don't subscribe in the way people interpret the Kenny and M- Kenneth and Mamie Clark study. I do believe that the children turned out very smart. And I think what they were witnessing was the, their understanding of the power dynamic. They knew who had the power in South Carolina. So they knew that their parents were beholden to the white community. They knew that certain actions had to take place. They knew that they were not safe based on race. So I do not believe that they felt as though they were inferior or felt bad about themselves. But I do think that they were telling us all that at that age, we understand the power dynamic in the 1950s in Somerton, South Carolina, first and foremost. So that's Brown v. Board in a nutshell, at least the Topeka case. And of course, each of the cases, as John will tell you, were unique and separate. Kansas was different only because it was not a matter of quality. It was not a matter of school buses. It was not a matter of having poor facilities. It was not a matter of teacher training. It was a matter of segregation per se, because people lived close to all the white schools that they attempted to enroll their kids in. But they rode buses for blocks and blocks and blocks solely because they were Afro, we were African-American.
Thank you for saying that, because I did want to talk about the fact that in Topeka, the elementary schools were good. Monroe was a very good school.
And it was four African-American schools. There was McKinley, Buchanan, Monroe, and Washington, and all of them.
Right.
Excellent teachers, absolutely.
Right, and so the issue of wanting to have school choice was for the ability, the freedom to attend the neighborhood school, which was closer to home, as opposed to...
I wouldn't use the word choice, Amy, to cut you off. The freedom, this whole thing about choice relative to Brown v. Board was really something employed by the opposition. The people that did not want to implement Brown v. Board, the people that were involved in the Southern Manifesto, the governor of your state, the Senator Harry Burton from your state. You know, no, this was a word they used, because they wanted to have a choice to comply with Brown v. So African-American parents would not have used that term, because it was more an issue of making sure children had the resources that all the schools had, which then would give them the opportunity. Thurgood Marshall himself, in his book, Thurgood Marshall, American. Since it was not about sitting next to white children, but it was about the resources. And the resources were being invested in white children. And so in order to access to those resources, we needed to have access to those classrooms. So choice was not part of the narrative in Brown v. Board.
Correct. Okay, thank you for that. Dr. Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you for joining, and thank you for calling back in. If you would, just take a few minutes to introduce yourself, and if you could tell us what Brown means to you and your role.
This is John R. Stokes speaking, born and bred in a place called Prince Edward County, Virginia. I was, at that time, a senior in high school. And we had grown up on the concept of separate but equal. And we had a few leaders in the neighborhood, Dr. Griffin, John Lancaster, and others who had attended school in Prince Edward County. Some of the veterans had come away from World War II, and they had come back to Robert R. Somerton High School as a veteran and a GI Bill, including my brother, Leslie. And they brought to our attention, it was right there before us. But we were separate, but we were never equal. In the county of Prince Edward, during that time, there were only two brick buildings. We weren't called black then, we were called colored. Only two brick buildings for colored kids, and they were in the town, the county seat called Farnville, Virginia. And the counties, the Manchester districts, there were schools for colored children, but they were all wooden building. One or two rooms apart by the stove. My brother serves as the principal of one of those schools, called New Oak. And as we looked across that county, and we saw those schools for the white kids, they were all brick building, central heat. State of the art in Farnville, which was the center point for the school. They had the state of the art, everything. Gymnasiums and things of that nature. And then we looked at the amount of monies that were satisfied for the county. And as we looked at it, the property value for the white school was $1.7 million. Of the value for the colored school, $875,000. So we saw before our own eyes separate but equal were not really working, because all of our senses pointed to the fact that we were looking at buildings that were inadequate in the county. We were also looking at the fact that students had to be transported for long distances just to get to the high school. And so in October 1950, a young lady came before us and said, "What are we going to do about this?" We had heard this before, going, striking, all that. But her name was Barbara Jones, and we looked at her. Irene Taylor, Card Stok, John Stok, looked at her and said, "Hey, she may be the person who can carry this torch, because she's not afraid." That was the beginning of our concept for the strike. I always referred to it as the Manhattan Project. Why? Because of the fact that it was done as a secret mission. And we pulled it off. 23rd of April 1951, we walked out. And our school, our case, remember, it's the only case that was student-led. The others were led by adults. Our case was the only case. And we were grateful, we're still grateful to Dr. Cheryl Brown Henderson, because they brought us into this formulation of of making our case a part of that case. And when we went on strike, we did not go on strike for integration. We don't went on strike for equality. That was it. Equality only. We did not wish integration during that time because of the fact that we really and truly just wanted that equality. But when the NAACP lawyers took it over, and of course, we met after the strike to formulate our concept with Mr. Robinson, Mr. Oliver Hill, and Dr. Henderson, who was then employed by Union University. They told us, told us that the only way we shall be able to take this case for integration. A lot of parents did not want that. But we met. And Mr. Banks held the meeting. He was executive secretary of the NAACP during that time. And we voted. Students, the committee, there were 20. There were 20 of us, formulated this committee. And we voted, believe it or not, a yes, won by only one vote. Because if it had not gone yes, I would not be talking to you today. And as a result of that, of course, we went ahead and put in the hands of the lawyers. And they said, "We can't turn back, because we have to stick together." And the only students who could sign the petition would be any students whose parents were landowners. And that was to protect us from the threat of the white power structure. My mother signed for our family. There were hundreds of students who signed, and around 67 parents who signed, I've got an exact number. Our case went to Virginia court first. I was called as a witness. They never called on me to go to the stand, because they had these other powerful persons who were there. But of course, then they meshed our case with the other cases. And that's when hell broke loose. Because once the 54 decision was rendered, as Dr. Henderson mentioned, there had the Southern Manifesto that was created. We had the Boatright Commission. Many, 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 many cases, if you look at the Virginia court record for the General Assembly, trying to stop this movement, trying to stop the movement of Brown versus Board of Education. But because of the fact that we stuck our guns and we signed the petition, we won our case, and of course, the rest is history.
Thank you.
Is everybody still there?
Yes, we're still here. Thank you so much for that very poignant story that a lot of us are missing. And that context, Mr. Stokes. I just want to reinforce at this point that what we've heard so far is that, in your case, Mr. Stokes, it was an issue of equal, equality, equal facilities, right? Separate but equal under Plessy versus Ferguson, which at the time was the precedent, wasn't... Right? Separate but equal under Plessy versus Ferguson, which at the time was the precedent, was not working. Right? Um there was no equality.
No, it 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 was separate, but it was never equal.
It was never equal. Correct. And um in the Brown case, Linda Brown was not, had no issue with quality of education at all.
No, it was that you've got to keep the context. Um we have worked decades to make sure people understood that this was a class action. This was not a case uh that about my family and that it was the NAACP's case. But in this case, the the children in Topeka, the children in Topeka um were not dealing with issues of facilities and transportation and quality and all of that. Um as a matter of fact, the African American teachers held more advanced degrees than their white counterparts, principally because there were no outlets for that master's degree or post, you know, masters or doctorate work. So, you know, the teachers were excellent and people were not in agreement with the NAACP. Um there was a split in the community and put in the community for for good reason. Uh because teachers in particular, think about all the teachers that lost their jobs across the South, nearly forty thousand, like thirty-eight thousand plus teachers. Well, the same was true for Topeka, that the superintendent of schools uh employed the tactic of divide and conquer and sent out letters to the African American teachers that were fairly newly hired to one or two years, saying to them that if those in favor of the plaintiffs, you won't have a job in black and white and make it the reason you won't have a job is because there was a sense that there wouldn't be enough white parents um colored as they referred to everyone in the front of their classrooms. After Brown v. Board in Topeka, they uh they did let them go. The the teachers that were fairly newly hired in the black schools. And they spent one year with a policy of calling every white parent because teachers were also integrated into the schools in Topeka. So if you were going to have an African American teacher in your building that's a fourth grade teacher, you had to call every parent of white fourth graders uh to get their consent. No, no one said no. And so they they dropped the policy. But it was something that uh they attempted to impose. And separate was never equal. John knows that as well.
Yeah. Well, let let me explain further about um inequality to 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 bring it right to the forefront of where we are today. When the new building was put up for students for our Robert Rusevsky High School, the building was constructed to hold a hundred and eighty students. When we went on strike in nineteen fifty-one, there were four hundred and fifty students on that site. And so what did the board do to compensate? They put up top paper shacks that were not fit for animals to live in. And those are the buildings that the overflow students had to attend on a daily basis. And it rained on us. And of course, if you pull those pictures up, you can see that the outside of the buildings were covered with top paper. And that material is used, used to be used on roofs before they put the finishing touches on top of the roof. They did not have the decency, the decency to put an outside covering on it though at least look representative to the community. And they said that was separate but equal. I attended classes in two of those buildings. There was one building on the front and there were two buildings on the backside. One of them was the agriculture building and the other was the math building and the physical ed building. All of them were of um poor construction. So here again, we were looking at things visible that we could see it. During the winter time, we could smell it because of the fact that that foot would really encompass the uh the whole area. And sometimes, sometimes those mechanisms would fall and the foot would just scavenge. Of course, kids move until the janitor, janitors will come in and put those particular chimney back in place. So that's what we were faced with uh on a daily basis. Including the fact that we did not have a science lab. You know, and Mr. M. Boy Jones, who was our principal, was fighting all the time just to get certain things for the school. And uh he would come up short. So people got tired of it and decided we need to do something. The parents had tried and they had run out of resources. They had run out of uh answers for the board. And um so we went on strike.
So this was around nineteen, was this around nineteen fifty-one or so? So Plessy had been the law of the land for fifty-five years and still there was no, there was no equality uh with 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 being separate um after all that time. So at some point, I guess, a strategic decision was made to uh by the NAACP to um pursue the angle of 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 desegregation when running that case up through the federal courts. Dr. Blackmore or Mr. Hernandez, would you, do you have any insight into the strategy and whether or not that strategy would have um been necessary had Plessy versus Ferguson been successful and accomplished what it should have accomplished?
Um so I, just to kind of shift gears just a little bit, I focused on my dissertation research on the follow-up Brown ruling in nineteen fifty-five. And honestly, when I first started my PhD program and learned about that ruling, I realized how much is overlooked. Um one of the things that kind of took me by surprise is that in across the country, there are still school districts that are under court supervision. And these school districts are just allowing to blow fly under the radar. I mean, school districts that have been under court supervision since nineteen sixty-three and it's twenty twenty-two. And these school districts are still having to report to the court system because they're still operating in Jim Crow segregation within their school walls. I think that the strategy that the NAACP deployed at the time was sound. I think that it was the correct strategy. Um the Brown versus Board of Education, for me, the most uh prominent thing that it did was give us a definition, a legal definition for equal educational opportunity in this country. And it gave us something that we were definitely supposed to build upon. Um but right now, what we're seeing with all of these shifts in um the political arena, especially in the judicial branch, we're not able to sustain the fight of the past. So our fight must look different. And I know I'm probably shifting the conversation a little bit, so I'll hush right there. But um my, my scholarship has focused largely on the judicial supervision of school districts. And it's something that I feel as though if it was done correctly, would have worked. But what we see across the country, it has not been done correctly. School districts were allowed to obtain their unitary status. And we tried everything that we could to desegregate our schools, but this is the result we got and now we're seeing resegregation.
That's, that's very interesting. There was an interview done with um a teacher in Richmond, Virginia. Um it, there was a series that Duke University had called Behind the Veil. It was a series of 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 inter- interviews. And they had interviewed an African American teacher named Celestine Porter. And one of the things she said was that it, the desegregation was not done correctly. They should never have started with the students. It should have started with the teachers first. Um so that, you know, you had black teachers in place in white schools, white teachers in place in black schools. But it 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 went one way and the, you know, the, one of the um travesties of that decision is the black teachers got fired um as as Dr. Henderson mentioned. In fact, there there, the the Brown decision doesn't really even talk about teachers. And it's, it's a case that's essential to um rejiggering education. And I think the teach- teacher is mentioned one time in the main text and a few times in the footnotes. And really, that, that probably begun the, the process that we see today, uh Dr. Blackmore, where students feel um disenfranchised, black students from the classroom. We've never been able to reestablish the amount of teach- black teachers throughout the United States in our schools. Um and so black students are are very often disengaged. Uh Ms. Ms. Porter mentioned that the students were were upset and angry. Um you know, they lost status as, you know, from being in classrooms where teachers were genuinely interested in them. So they lost that status. They lost a culturally rich curriculum. They lost culturally responsive teaching. And then they're thrown into the hostility of desegregated schools, which I distinguish from its integration, but in desegregated schools. And so it seems like we've never recovered from that.
Well, I will say that it was all very strategic, that um there was never an intent on the part of political figures and local policy makers to implement Brown v. Board. It was very strategic from day one and then it became visibly strategic with the Southern Manifesto because the manifesto made it clear, and this came out of the United States Congress, it clear that you don't need to be in a hurry. We have your back. We believe the court overstepped. We're going to do everything in our power congressionally on Brown v. Board. And then they set out to do exactly that. So I think that there are two things. Supreme Court decisions are just the beginning of a conversation. The people that win, you know, are are pleased. The people that lose spend every waking hour trying to make sure what they don't want to happen not happen. And that's exactly what happened with Brown v. Board. There was no implementation um, you know, narrative. There was no po- no strategy, no, nothing. With all deliberate speed says nothing. Deliberate means slow. And so in some ways, that was another dog whistle. That, you know, we we've done this thing, but you don't really need to worry about uh making it something you do in in a big hurry, if at all. So I think that what um Dr. Blackmore said was true then, just as it is true now. And things have not changed. I mean, there was a a a fraction of a percent of the schools that actually desegregated a fraction, you know? And then you think about um, oh, what was the one, Seattle versus uh Community Schools? I may not be saying that correctly, but cases in the early two thousands where people were voluntarily integrating their schools. They come up with plans on their own as school districts. And you had parents that were white that didn't necessarily agree with, you know, the strategy they were using. And we have another case. It's a different court. It arrives at that Supreme Court and what do they do? They deny them the voluntary option of integrating schools and coming up with system. So my thinking is this, and what infuriates me the most, is I don't think it was anticipated that the uh the pushback would be so severe and so it's so continued. I mean, it's going on even now. Nobody anticipated that. You know, I think Justice Marshall, Thurgood Marshall realized it wasn't going to be simple. He laid out far, not realizing that power was not going to concede anything. And those in our country that believe themselves to be the ones that should have access to the power and privilege, we're not about to give that up or share it. So I think everything that's happened was their, you know, backroom cigar smoking strategy from day one that this thing, this thing is not going to happen. So the one thing we can say about Brown v. Board is that it's interpretation of the Fourteenth Amendment. I mean, that gives it more weight than anything because it's an equal protection uh case. And so it's used as a precedent for many other equal protection cases, whether it's marriage equality or something else. But where schools are concerned, you know, when when you consider that education was denied people of African descent intentionally, now not wanting people that look like us to be literate so that we could be full participants, you look at what happened during Reconstruction that lasted a New York minute. Because the people that felt themselves pow- powerful and privileged, you know, weren't going to have it. Were going to look at us and didn't want to ever have to to view us as their equals and to compete on it on an equal basis. That wasn't going to happen. So what we see now, because there was no serious implementation of Brown v. Board, is exactly what was expected, nothing. So my view is, you teach, it it's education. There is no excuse for not teaching children where you find them. We are asking the wrong questions. Their public education should be a place where we're talking about review and reform. We should not be talking about leaving. You know, here's a voucher, go someplace else. You know, I've got a charter from the state and a corporate, you know, entity that's going to fund me. I'm going to set up a school. No. We should not even allow that. It should be impermissible. But I think we're we're asking the wrong questions. We allow our children to be scapegoated. Children can be taught to suggest that because the school is populated by black and brown children that it's a failing, underfunded school. That's not acceptable. When the public has all this collective money. But what the public doesn't have is a collective political will to say, stop right now. You know, this happens because we let it. You know, we we participate in the rhetoric of failure. You know, you've got people like, uh I can't think of his name now, that for decades has been running a a school desegregation civil rights project out at UCLA. You know, it's an industry focusing on our children and what's not happening. And nobody's talking about what should be happening and there's no excuse for it not happening. So it shouldn't matter. If I'm in a school, but everybody looks like me, I should be getting that world-class education. You know, and I don't care if every teacher in the building is is white or purple. If they're doing their jobs and being held to account for doing them, then it doesn't matter, you know? We we're not chasing something. You know, we're in place in those classrooms, in those schools with an expectation. But nobody's holding anybody accountable to make sure that happens. It is inexcusable that we talk about failing, underfunded schools with a wink and a nod. How is that possible? So Brown v. Board made it possible to have opportunity where there had not been opportunity before. Because they said, okay, legally, you can't keep me from having this opportunity. But what the white community and the people that were instituting racist policies made sure of is that it would always be substandard, you know, uh hiddenness. Um we make sure that graduating second-class citizens that cannot read, yet we claim they've been taught for twelve years, you know? It's it's crazy. You know, I I I'm not buying it. And so I'm not the one to talk to about choice because choice was something white parents used to opt out.
Absolutely.
So I really, you know, we, until we start asking the right questions and holding people to account, if we will put a Bessie DeVos in charge of public education in this country for four years? A woman that wants to bankroll charter schools and decimate public education? The Republican Party's already made it clear they want to destroy public education, because that's where we are. So I really think that a lot of it is the the polit- politics. We need to demand a little more of our elected officials. And we need to take the time to make sure they know how we feel, what we think, and what we know is possible. We know is possible. Every child can be educated. You know, but we allow them to abdicate that responsibility and we walk away. And in terms of African-American teachers, I won't take up too much more time. The reason our classrooms are not populated like they once were. First of all, with other career options after the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four. Teachers are not respected, which is, you know, again, something we should shouldn't um walk away from. That that's nonsense. Teachers are foundational to this country. They are more important than any other entity in this country when it comes to occupation. Everything we know how to do, somebody taught us. So I I just think we're having the wrong conversations, you know, with the wrong people. And the white people know that we're not coming for them, you know? Because when that happens, we'll we'll start seeing some change. And, you know, we looked at my last thing. We looked at school board meetings last summer. People crying about CRT, you know? The fact that our children were not being taught. You know, isn't that more important than some theory that will never be taught in the K-12 system? But we we, you know, I I'm an old lady, so you know, I I I that's my excuse. But I have grandkids, and I make sure my son and his wife are on the PTA board and they're in the faces of the educators to make sure what needs to happen is happening.
Can I, can I just give a quick plug?
Please do.
Remind, remind people to pay attention to what happens in the Virginia State Legislature.
Who's talking, please? Who's talking, please?
Uh, one of our panelists, Phil Hernandez.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have a session that starts in January. And of course, I think on a day-to-day basis, the decisions that are made in the General Assembly impact us much more than even what happens in Congress or in the White House. And I'd say, of course, with this panel, pay particular attention to the bills that we see filed in the education space. Because part of what concerns me in our day-to-day work is that you've seen a governor administration that um almost seems to be blaming educators, almost seems to be attacking our public schools in the wake of a pandemic that caused learning loss understandably in Virginia, as it did in many other places across the country, right? That was an unusual event that posed unique challenges. There is a risk that that opens the door for them to push for school choice. And to say that schools are failing and therefore that we need to go to market-based solutions, right? Where we should be having a conversation about school funding, about undoing some of the inequitable ways that we fund our public schools, particularly in communities of color. Funding a teacher pay, which is, you know, we are a pretty wealthy Commonwealth compared to many other states. We don't pay our teachers particularly well, so they're leaving, going to other places. They're leaving the profession altogether. I mean, there are really consequential decisions. And the last one I'll just say is you hear a lot from this administration about how we have a surplus in Virginia. You may have heard, you know, we we did better than expected, and so we have more money. Well, no, we don't. Because we have not been meeting our most basic needs to our students and to our te- it would be like me telling my spouse, look how much we have in our bank account before we've paid for the mortgage and childcare and all. Y- you can't say you have a surplus until you've met your basic obligations. And that is part, I think, of what we will see them try to do. And it is on us to hold them accountable and make sure that we're funding our key priorities for our kids.
The uh, one of the other things that struck me is while Brown might have had the right result in terms of equal protection clause. The analysis in that decision was extremely damaging um to black students. The analysis that our black children were psychologically damaged by not being in class next, sitting next to white students. Um, and so I think the white supremacy that threads that um court opinion um is really damaging. And I I I think it's spilling over um still today. Um, and so it just makes it.
Well, we'll say this, okay. Earl Warren chose to read that one, three, four, or five sentences. The opinion says much more. The part of the opinion that I use when I'm out visiting with people is the part that says education is the most important act of state and local governments. No child can be expected to succeed in life without the benefit of education. And where it is provided, it must be provided in equal measure. That's part of the Brown decision. That's what he should have read. We could have gone about making sure that happened. But to read some statement about um uh making children feel inferior, and it may be so harmful that it may never be undone, you know, that is egregious. And I agree with you that sometimes people can't help being who they are. And I know I was talking to someone the other day saying inferior is not a term we use, not ever, not ever. That was a term imposed on us, you know, by Earl Warren and and people that look like Earl Warren. It's not something we use. It's not something we felt. You know, we knew that there was injustice, but injustice is not the same as inferior and inferiority. So, you know, again, we we've we've been labeled repeatedly and continuously. And, you know, these are not labels that uh emanate from our community. They're not labels that are in our hearts. And so, you know, all of that too is is um frustrating. You know, to know that these things are intentional because they have the intentional impact on the larger community. So if you're saying it's a Supreme Court decision that you've got these people here that are inferior and will keep feeling inferior unless we can get them into these schools, well, hey, I I wanted to believe that. So this just says to me that what I suspected is right. But it's not me making that statement. It's the majority population making those kinds of calculations. And and again, I mean, every anytime I talk to college students, I tell them, you know, some of these, these, these are not your problem. People want you to feel a certain way. People want you to react as based on their view of you and their labeling of you. You know, propaganda is the most powerful weapon of any government at every level. And propaganda is what makes this country go around. And it's what keeps us in these kinds of dialogues.
You know, I I need to say something here because uh I just just want to make it clear. We did not want to sit beside white kids who went on strike in nineteen. We thought about our strike. We went on strike because of inadequate facility. It had nothing to do with feeling inferior to white people. We felt superior because of the fact that we had good teachers who had taught us to move forward regardless of your race. We knew we had to be better. So we had no problem with academia. We had problem with our physical environment, environments that were inadequate throughout the county.
I think that's also important in the discussions that we see about public education today, where the focus is always on the achievement gap and not on the opportunity gaps. And um that's another discussion that I always make sure to put into my writings. Because I want us to be clear that we cannot blame children for not scoring high on a standardized test or not being able to read when we're also not putting in the proper resources so that they can succeed. And um I I I love that Mr. John Stokes put that out there so much that they were fighting for resources. Because a lot of what we're discussing today is still that constant fight for resources, you know? Go- long-gone old days. Okay, we can sit next to white kids in class now. But will I have the same educational opportunities that they have? Will I be able to go into gifted um class to receive a deeper uh educational experience? Will I be able to enroll into advanced math? You know, these are discussions we don't have. I went to a magnet school. And even though I was at that magnet school, not many of the black kids were taking advanced placement courses or, you know, honors courses. Not enough of us even realized that that was an option for us. So we need to make sure that when we're having these discussions, that we're getting people to understand, like, this isn't a failing school. This is the under-resourced school. Put some resources into the school. Put certified teachers into the school. Put new textbooks. Make sure they have advanced courses. And you will see a different outlook on those um schools if you do those things.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, I I, you know, I I had to jump in there because I I I got got that feeling somewhere that someone had the wrong concept here. You know, uh, remember now, when we went on strike nineteen fifty-one, we had inadequate facilities. We, when I was, when I entered the elementary school, we never got new books. We got books that were handed down by the white kids that had racial concepts written in them. You know, so we always got the hand-me-downs. Imagine if we had gotten a a science lab. Imagine if we had gotten other items that would help us. And as a retired principal, teacher, college professor, I can say this. With the resources, we could move forward. But we did not have those resources. We had the brains, but you see, we didn't have the resources. Remember that we were leaders of the school. I was the president of a group called the New Farmers of America for the State of Virginia during that time. Why? Because I had the ability to do so. And we did not take second seats to any of the kids, even the white kids that I would see. We would discuss education. We were not that far behind them. Sometime, we were ahead of them. So it had nothing at all to do with the brain power. It had to do with the resource that we were not receiving. And we were not getting because we were colored. And of course, then they closed our schools, Penqueville County, from fifty-nine through sixty-four. To even the score because the colored people had the audacity, audacity to join forces with the other four cases to become a part of Brown v. Board. How dare them do this? They closed the school. And they opened a white private school.
Well, and that mentality.
Right. That's that's the catalyst for school choice. That's the history of school choice, was to avoid going to school with black students.
Exactly. It always, it always has been. And look, the people that graduate schools that we mentioned, and we talk about HBCUs, and the reason they're still so uh because of the this, the same rationale. You know, if you're in a majority white institution, chances are you have the experience that Dr. Blackmore talked about. You know, you're not being advised into AP courses, or you're you're not being um encouraged to go into something that's really going to provide you with uh the the living wage or the kind of degree that you should Now, this is, none of this is by accident. And I think about the U.S. Department of Education. You know, when we get a new Secretary of Education, it it should not be an appointed position. It should be a senior executive position within the government so that it doesn't change every forty-eight years. And the policies actually implement it. If you're changed every forty-eight years, depending on what the new presidential administration has said about education on the ground, or having to shift their focus based on this new um reach for the top, or no child left behind, or whatever, you know, the new administration has come up with. It makes it even more difficult to have any continuity. And the Secretary of Education, in my view, number one, should be sending out teams across the country, every federal region. We've already got these nice regions developed, you know, for the purpose of assessing, reviewing, and then reform implementation, not a reform report that you're going to put on a, on a wall someplace, on a shelf, but reform implementation. You know, fuck is all the only people populating public schools are students of code. We're not the majority in public schools. You know, if you look at the the demographics on the the site for the U.S. Department of Education, you know, there there are other folks there too. But we keep fighting over, you know, educating black and brown children. And um that's hundreds of years old. And unless we get somebody in there like a Secretary of Education that understands the roll-up-your-sleeves work that needs to be done, you know, that Dr. Blackmore mentioned. And we have to fear what the Dr. Hernandez or Tony Hernandez says. Because they're not. They're treading water. Arnie Duncan? You know, Betsy DeVos? Uh, Mr. Dr. Cardova, I don't really know his name, but, you know, are they out testing the schools in um around the country? That they can offer some sort of reform implementation? I'm not sure what they do. I mean, not to be facetious, but.
I don't think they want to reform. I think they wanted to continue to move along just as usual. And I hate to interrupt because you all are having such a rich conversation. But I just learned that I'm the only one that can see the chat. So I'd like to bring to your attention two uh questions that I saw. One is from Jerome Selden. And let me see, Jerome, I'm gonna make you able to talk so that you can ask the question yourself. Let me just see. Let me type your name in. There you are, allowed to talk. All right, Mr. Selden?
I am female.
Oh, I'm sorry. It showed up Jerome in the in the chat. Thank you.
That's my name. My name is.
Your name is Jerome. Well, my apologies. I should have asked about the pronouns. Please forgive me.
That's okay. That's perfectly okay. No, I was actually making a comment. Uh, Doc, am I right? Dr. Stokes? Have I got the right person?
Oh, Mr. Mr. Stokes.
I'm I'm not a, I'm not, I'm not a doctor, but go ahead.
Okay. And I was pretty much commenting on what you said about, um, I think you sort of said that we weren't fighting for, and and I graduated in nineteen sixty. And from a, uh, my high school was Pierce Jones High School in Washington, North Carolina. And that we meet every two years. The pandemic has sort of cut that out a bit, but every two years for a high school reunion. I don't know if if anybody there who wishes that we had uh uh not in, I mean, integrated the schools when we were there. Our school was just uh, the only thing we we can say is if we had two labs, Washington High School, which was for the white kids, they may have had five or six labs, you know? We only had one foreign language. But the thing about it is that I can say and truthfully say that at least seventy-five to eighty percent of our students graduated from high school. And being from North Carolina, a lot of our students went to, well, seventy-five to eighty percent of us went to college and graduated. We had eleven black colleges in North Carolina, so we had a a lot to choose from. And I would find out when I'd go back to the school reunions, classmates of mine, that I had no idea that they had gone to college and had finished. They were teach, they were teachers. They they were um, sometimes had graduated and gone on to get and got their PhDs. And so we were adequately prepared. But if we think about some of the things we could have had that were not given to us, um, there was no telling or or no limits to what we could have done. But we were taught very well. I don't remember every, every Sunday, my family, there are three of us, three brothers left and and one sister, so there are five of us now. Every Sunday at five o'clock, we meet. And we were talking about students not knowing how to read today. I don't remember kids not knowing how to read. Um, and teachers prepared us. And and we talk about what's not given to teachers today. I a- a- and as as uh uh I was listening, there are teachers who are not teaching because there are teachers who are not teaching because they're not prepared to even teach our kids. And they're not demanding things from our children today. And I don't know how to get them back. And I taught, I I retired after thirty-three years of teaching myself. And so I can understand what's going on today, but I don't, there's gotta be a better solution to what's going on. Uh, that our children, we're saying our children can't read. There's something wrong with that picture. Uh, because they should be reading, absolutely reading. Kids who came from just, I mean, nowhere growing up when I grew up, and they ended up knowing how to read and get a job and a lot went to college. So there's, there's a lot to be said that's wrong with our public education. And it should not be because our children should be turning out extremely well who graduate from public schools. Uh, because they should be demanding uh certain things to be given to our children. And I, I'm enjoying, yeah, I'm enjoying this. Uh, and and if you don't know my hometown, Dominique Wilkins is one of the graduates of a high school, if you know the basketball player. You've never heard of Washington, North Carolina, it's a great place to be from.
Is that in Washington County?
No, it's in Beaufort, it's, no, it's in Beaufort, it's in Beaufort County.
Okay.
Right on the water, right on the water.
Oh, I bet it's beautiful. Thank you for your comment. We have two more. Bronte Montgomery, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Ha, thank you so much. Um, I I'm calling on you to ask the question or make the point that you made in our question and answer.
Yes, so. Yes, so um several years ago, I was researching um boards in the in the Commonwealth, um, just looking for maybe some opportunities to serve. And I came across the Brown versus uh Board of Education Scholarship. Um, that is uh for those individuals who were unable to attend school. But I was al- always interested in how is that, was that, is that publicized? Or was it publicized greatly for people to take advantage of it? Um, because I just see it as a missed opportunity for those who may have had the opportunity. Um, and then I think the second piece of that, by the time the funds became available, individuals were probably later in life and maybe considered not going to school. So is there the thought process to be able to provide that for the descendants of those individuals who had missed opportunities um for education?
Yeah, is John still on? He could answer that, Mr. John.
I think he might have gotten disconnected, but that's exactly what I was going to do. I was gonna toss to him because he and a newspaper editor in Prince Edward County were quite influential in getting that get-on-the-bus activist campaign at the beginning of this millennium. And we uh we, many of us got on buses literally and headed to Richmond to say we need some type of scholarship. If I'm not mistaken, it's two million dollars in the fund. But as you stated, the money was only available to those uh people, those citizens of Virginia, who were students during the time of the public school closings. Now, this meant that most of those students were well over fifty years old when this opportunity became available to them. And so there were murmurings then about whether or not that money could go to their children, to their grandchildren, to their nieces, and were told no. But, you know, I was just speaking with a committee member and another member of the Virginia State uh Conference here, and that is an issue that we would like to agitate for because we think it only fair then if that money has been set aside, that descendants of those can come. And this is, as the kids say, no shade to older people because I think I'm gonna soon be getting my AARP, A AARP card myself. But um, you know, usually by the time you're well into your seventies, close to your eighties, you might not really see the value of going back to undergraduate school. And it would be great to pass that down to to uh generations that are a bit younger. So so uh as it stands now, my understanding that it's still only available to those students directly locked out of school, and that's something that we hope we're able to influence change surrounding.
That that would make a lot of sense, um, um, Amy, because the GI Bill is passed down.
Exactly.
Um, so if 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 they can do it at the federal level, we certainly could do do it on at the state level.
Yes, yes, I agree. We had another comment from uh Cheryl Neal. Are you still on the line? I've given you permission to speak if you would like to ask your question.
You did.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Neal, go ahead.
Okay, so um, this is a different question because a lot of the questions that I had were already answered. But one question I had was if someone could speak on, um, now that they are trying to get rid of college admissions, um, uh, having to be um no longer diversified, how do we think that's gonna impact our colleges going forward? Like, do we think that that's gonna also create um segregation in like the higher uh structured schools? If someone can comment on that.
So I think you're referring to affirmative action. Um, the irony of it is white women are the the majority recipients of affirmative action. It's not black people. I mean, so, you know, I I it's, it'll be interesting to see um how the decision is going to come down as to, it's it's not a quota system. That was ruled unconstitutional. So it's whether or not race can even be considered a factor, one of many factors of uh um i- in diversity. I don't know how that's going to um to shake out. What I do know is this, is that when the um our our governor's school in Virginia, the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, when they changed their admissions process to a a lottery um that allowed, i- it removed barriers of the the test that students had to take and the fee to pay, and every school got like a certain number of slots um by lottery, they got more black and brown students that scored very high um a- a- in terms of their GPA and their essays and the quality of students, which really blows the myth that uh students that are coming in into affirmative action is there because of 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 of, you know, the quota or the opportunity and not because of merit. So I don't, we, that that remains to be seen what the um Supreme Court will do. But I will say this, that seventy percent of the African-American doctors and scientists and dentists come out of HBCUs. So 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 that right there alone, you know, speaks to the level of excellence of black people. And then we will be okay whether or not, you know, Harvard can consider race or not. We are gonna be okay because we are, we are phenomenally smart, bright innovators. And I'm really not too worried about what the Supreme Court is going to decide um in 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 this current case. We're gonna be fine, we're gonna be just fine. We were fine before and we will, we're gonna still be fine.
I wondered how affirmative action made its way out of its original intent. You know, Arthur Fletcher, who was, went to school, went to Pika, Washington University, played football, uh, was hired by the Nixon administration. I think he was an undersecretary of labor for Richard Nixon because affirmative action is a Nixon-era executive order. But they originally pinned the executive order so that um contracts, you know, bidding on construction contracts, so that they would be forced to cash the net, you know, very broadly so that people of color could be hired in some of those jobs because they were being shut out. I mean, I really don't know historically how it made its way to higher education when we consider its original intent. And I think sometimes it it it's it's nice to remind people that it came out of um a Republican administration, be it Richard Nixon. And then Judge Brown Jackson, I listened to the arguments on October thirty-first, and you can listen to them anytime. I would suggest you do that if they're worth listening to. Because she is um a powerful, powerful representative and voice on the court. And she oftentimes finds herself in a position to be educating her colleagues on the court. Then when they feign ignorance of the Constitution, then she will have to remind them, you know, in known certain terms. And in listening to the affirmative action case, she made a good point. Because she said, if if I'm a student and I write a letter to the university to go with my application saying that I'm sixth generation North Carolinian, you know, I've always wanted to go to this school. I've had other relatives have gone to this school, you know, that's fine. But if I write a letter and say I'm sixth generation Carolinian or or more than that, you know, ten generations, that I came from enslaved people, people that were enslaved in this state, uh, I've always wanted to go to UNC. And for for whatever, you have to deny that part of your experience in order for the justices that that want to rule against affirmative action to accept, you know, your your application. I mean, it's, how did we get here where, you know, you have to deny a part of yourself um in order to make somebody else comfortable? Which sounds a lot like the legislatures around the country that are wanting to infuse the teaching of history, you know? So that our story gets whitewashed or erased because somebody else might be uncomfortable. I mean, this is the kind of stew, I won't even call it gumbo, gumbo's too good. This is the kind of stew that I I don't even know how we find our way out of. Because every day, somebody comes up with a new wrinkle that will impact us negatively.
I think what is also interesting about the affirmative action case that was just before the court, which I think that opinion probably come out in June sometime, but um was the sort of old tactic of pitting people of color against one another. Because remember that that case, uh, there were a couple of cases, but they were framed as um affirmative action discriminates against Asian-Americans um in the United States. And so there was this sort of attempt to, right, siphon people off into different groups, um, which is a tried and true tactic, of course, as we know. Um, so we'll, of course, have to see that decision, its reach, but it did seem like a very skeptical court uh based on the oral argument.
And Mr. Hernandez, Attorney Hernandez, what strikes me is that isn't this another um instance where people have been recruited? I mean, isn't there another R. Conley-type person that's traveling the country, you know, trying to to recruit people and and get these cases before the Supreme Court? Now, even that is suspicious.
And I think it's dangerous. And I think that, you know, for the people that want to bring cases like this and other kinds of, I think, harmful cases, they see a very friendly Supreme Court right now. And so, of course, they wanna, they wanna file those test cases, they're gonna file them in the right courts and get them in the right circuit courts ultimately with the idea of getting them in the Supreme Court. And I think it's not just this issue, right? We're gonna see this, I worry in voting rights, I worry in a lot of different areas across the board. And so we have to, we have to monitor that.
Yeah, that voting right, I listened to the voting rights argument. You guys need to listen to these arguments, it's it's so enlightening. But I listened to the voting rights argument, um, they were trying to, again, Judge Brown Jackson had to remind them that the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendments were race-conscious amendments. Because they were trying to suggest that we shouldn't be dealing with race-conscious, you know, issues when it comes to voting and all that. But they were, those those amendments were uh based on wanting to make sure African-Americans could be full participants. So she did remind them of that, that, you know, that's a fallacy to suggest that we should not be race-conscious.
I wanna jump in with one more question. Well, thank you all, so you you all are talking and I'm, yeah, uh, thinking back to the the old church. I'm saying in my mind, preach, preach. But anyway, uh, Maya Guy has a comment to make. Um, Ms. Guy, are you still available? I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for having me, I'm enjoying the discussion. I was just hoping that um we can encourage everyone who's listening to attend their local school board meetings. I'm on my local school board and there is little to none when it comes to engagement from our community. But there is lots of engagement from communities that actually want school choice. And it's been this way for a very long time where I live. It's incredibly sad and and the situation is dire. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I couldn't agree more. We were just having this internal conversation in in our committee that there absolutely has to be more investment and and engagement from parents, not just their parents, our us, um, on 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 the school board. Um, because if we're not paying attention ahead of time, then we're caught trying to play, you know, defense and catch up and it's too late. Once the school board is elected, it's selected and you are just going to have to deal with whatever decisions come down until the next election. So we really absolutely have to be paying attention to that. And there is a strategy by a a particular uh political party, which is the way to the White House is through the schoolhouse. So some of them are playing the long game and we need to be doing the same thing.
Yes, um, school board members, especially black school board members, have a special place in my heart. Um, just because that was the other aspect of my dissertation that I've yet to mention, you know, and I really did find some significant findings that suggest that black students do well and the opportunity gap between black and white students is smaller in school districts that actually have black representation on the school boards. Um, I do think that school boards are often overlooked, um, just like local governments in general. We just had the midterm elections and I'm pretty sure you all have noticed how low voter turnout has been. Um, in particular, like at the city council um elections or a school board member election. So I think that we do have a lot of work to do in our communities in terms of engaging people, you know. One of the things that we talk about a lot on our committee is how do we engage parents? So I think that we should be mindful of thinking of ways to get that community engagement. Um, we can't just wait or hope for it to come.
I agree, I agree. And we can't leave out that political piece, right? It also, all of the, all of them are intertwined. I believe that Leslie Scott has had uh a hand raised for a while now and I'm just realizing how to get to it. So please forgive the delay. Leslie Scott, please go ahead and ask your question. You're muted. I can't, can't hear you. Would you unmute, please?
She may have stepped away.
Yeah, that that may have been the, I I hope that I haven't left anyone. I'm looking at the time, I see that it's eight-thirty. Uh, I think we could keep going and going and going. Uh, I'm gonna ask one last, and I think there was one more question in the chat from, uh, not question, but comment from Sharice Kern. If, do you want to speak out loud, Sharice, also a member of our committee? I can't see her, so let's see.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening. Now, this has been a wonderful conversation and I just wanna thank everybody who's participated. Um, and I can't remember what my comment was, but I just felt like all of this was resonating and especially talking about um the school board, the issue with having parents participate in the school boards. And I live in Arlington County, so we have a lot of advisory committees. And the role of those committees is to push recommendations up to the school board related to things like um English Language Arts, math, um, English learning. And we don't have a lot of black families who engage in those areas in their very powerful places to be. So what we did um during our tenure here, Simone and I, is to try to seed those committees with people who are always going to ring the bell about the needs of black and brown students. And we we gained a measure of success, but now that we're post George Floyd and what we're experiencing is that white people are starting to lose interest in the hard work of of integr- of, of integration. When we're talking about, you know, really making our school systems work for all students and have that not just be lip service. So, you know, the important thing is that, I think the big takeaway is that this work is not finished, not by a long shot. So some of us have to tag out and take a rest and we need another phalanx to come forward and continue this work. But I'm feeling really inspired. Thanks, everybody.
To give one final thank you to our wonderful audience and the panelists. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hernandez, Dr. Blackmore, Dr. Cheryl Brown Henderson, Mr. John Stokes. I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. This has been phenomenal. Thank you, all of the attendees. I want to turn this back to our awesome moderator, Simone Walker, for her to close out or make any final comment or whatever it is she would like to do. Yeah.
Thank you all so much. I have learned just so much myself from being on the panel. And I, I am enriched from my own advocacy in my community, from, from hearing all of that. I think, you know, we need to not make this just another panel. And I think we need some takeaways and some action. So from, so from what I've heard so far is, you know, we need to be listening to those Supreme Court arguments so that we understand what the issues are, what the justices are saying, rather than just waiting for the, the, the final opinion, right? Because as we've seen, you know, the rationale in those opinions can go sideways or they can be right on point. So we need to be paying attention to the arguments, the oral arguments. We need to be getting involved at the school board level. It is critically, critically important that we pay attention to what's going on, on our school board. You know, we had a, a, a comment and a question from a retired teacher, Ms. Selden, that talked about why aren't our children learning to read? Because they are not being taught the code. Right? Anti-literacy laws might not be legal on the books, but it is still at play in our schools. They took phonics out of schools. And only privileged parents who aren't, whose kids aren't learning to decode in school are paying tutors outside to teach their kids how to read. So we have to advocate, we have to pay attention. We have to get involved in our school board. Go to meetings, talk to school board members. We need more black people running for school board. It's critically, representation matters. And so with that, my heartfelt appreciation and gratitude, especially to Dr. Henderson and Mr. Stokes for, for sharing their journey once again, for our edification and education. And we are so appreciative of your perspective, of your correction to the misinformation that's out there. It's critically needed. And we thank you and we are so much better for having you graciously accept our invitation. Thank you to Mr. Hernandez and to Dr. Blackmore, who I believe is, is gonna be working with our, on our committee as well. And we thank you for the audience for tuning in. And with that, I will say goodnight, unless there are any last words from the panel.
I would like to say one thing.
Yes, sir.
We started our movement by sitting in on the school board meetings as high school students. We need to advocate to all high school students who have official, whether they're the president or the, whatever, to sit in on these meetings, take notes, pick up everything those board members are gonna give you so that they can be shakers and movers in the community.
Absolutely. Student voices are so powerful and we've got to figure out a way to get our students engaged once again and lead the way. They are the future. Thank you so much, young Mr. Stokes, for, for, for that. And you are an inspiration, absolutely. Yes. All right, thank you, everyone.
Good night, good night.
Good night.
Good night.